Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Murfreesboro City Schools School Board. Today is January 14th, 2025, and we are so glad we have such a packed crowd tonight. We love to celebrate good things in the district, and we welcome all of you who are watching from home. First, we're going to start with our Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence. I would ask that during our Moment of Silence, you think about our Board Chair Butch Campbell, who had a bit of a health scare, but he's doing fine, but just keep him in your thoughts. And our pledge tonight is going to be led by three of our students. Lauren Honeyman, who's a fifth grader, and Ada Lynn Honeyman, who's a fourth grader. They're both at Ermas Segal, and also Jamison D. Berry, who's a kindergartner at Overall Creek. And I'll ask them to come forward and lead us in our pledge now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll have our Moment of Silence. Thank you. All right, Board members, you have seen the proposed agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that carries Communications, Ms. Lisa Trail.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to say Happy National School Board Appreciation Week. It's coming up the end of the month, but we won't be in session during that time, so I want to make sure that everyone knows that we will be celebrating you guys. It's from January 26th through February 1st, and we are so grateful for what you guys do for us and our schools. Also, Murfreesboro City Schools will host a District-wide Job Fair on Saturday, February 8th, from 9:30 to 11:30 at Black Fox Elementary. The event is designed to connect our teacher candidates, as well as our support staff candidates, with the job opportunities that we have. So once again, Job Fair, February 8th, 9:30 to 11:30 at Black Fox. If you're interested, we want to see you there. Discovery School applications are due by January 31st, so that deadline is quickly approaching. You can find everything you need to know regarding the applications and all of the information that is needed on the Discovery School website. So if you're interested and have a child that's going in kindergarten through sixth grade, you can apply. You're also invited to Murfreesboro City Schools' art show at the Frist. I know as you walked in today, you saw a lot of artwork in their rotunda, which is always beautiful, but we can even take that up another level, and our students are showing at the Frist, and it's amazing. The show begins January 18th and runs through February 2nd, and I want to say thank you to our art teachers for making that happen. Bradley Academy will present the African-American Cultural Night at Patterson Park on February 27th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. They also have Aladdin coming up, Aladdin Jr., during the week of March 12th through 14th. So be sure to mark both of those events on your calendar, and you will get more details as they approach. We are also excited to announce that our parent university classes are scheduled for our spring semester. It's a lot of free workshops for our parents and their guests, just about strategies that help support their children's education and the well-being. We will be doing Free in the Anxious Generation, and that's going to be held three different times, January 23rd, February 27th, and March 6th. Also doing New Year, New Math on January 28th, that's a Zoom session. Characteristics of Dyslexia, that is also a Zoom session on January 29th. And Helping Students Cope with Big Emotions, February 18th. And then there's another parent TCAP workshop on March 12th. All of these are listed on our website in depth, so if a parent is interested, please go to the City Schools' website for more information. They're free. Our instruction team really works hard to put on some really good courses in collaboration with our parent outreach, our community outreach coordinator. So with that, those are my announcements.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trail, and we are always happy to hear from you, but I know our students and teachers were really happy to hear from Lisa Trail last Friday.
Maybe not yesterday, but yes, definitely Friday.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, next up, the Best of MCS, Dr. Duke.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So we are so excited tonight to recognize our January Best of MCS honoree and to publicly thank this employee for their hard work and the work they've contributed to make our school district so wonderful. So I'm really honored to ask Ms. Heather Lawson to join me at the podium. Ms. Lawson is the Front Office Educational Assistant at Ermas Segal Elementary and has served at Ermas Segal for the past seven years. She started as a midday assistant at Ermas Segal, thinking it would be her retirement job after practicing dental hygiene for 15 years, but she transferred into the current full-time position three years ago and is proud to have both of her children to go through the school as well. As the Front Office EA, Ms. Lawson is often the first person that visitors encounter when they come into our school. She sets the tone for their visit and sets the tone for the school. In addition to that, she has a key role in playing the school safety of our schools and making sure she knows who's coming in and out of our buildings. All good leaders know that a strong front office staff is essential to running a strong school, and I am so pleased that your work is being recognized. Ms. Lawson actually received multiple nominations for this honor, which speaks to the difference that she is making and the positivity she brings to all she does. Her nomination said, "Heather is always so positive, upbeat, and friendly. She is the smiling face that greets our guests, the cheerful voice for our announcements and dismissals, and she always has something nice to say." I love this. She said, the nomination said, "She has been so helpful to me as a new employee, and I truly appreciate her. She is funny, approachable, and knows this school like the back of her hand. She always has a smile to give and something nice to say, and it is good to know that she is the first person our visitors interact with. She really represents our school and our office well. She deserves to be recognized for her consistent, positive energy and helpfulness." Another staff member said, "Heather greets everyone who enters the office with a smile. She is patient and kind toward coworkers, but most importantly, she is compassionate and kind toward the children." Ms. Lawson told me that one of her favorite things to do is to make those daily announcements, and she really enjoys the relationships she's made with colleagues, students, and parents. Finally, she said, and I love this quote, she told me, she said, "We are a family at Ermas Segal. Everyone works together and cares for one another. I love the people I work with, and I love the kids at our school. We truly are a family of Segal Eagles. And when your leaders are exceptional, it's easy to love what you do in an environment that they cultivate." So thank you, Ms. Spencer, for that. Ms. Lawson, we are so grateful to have you as part of our district. There is no doubt you are making a significant difference for our students, for our staff, and we are so honored to celebrate you as the Best of MCS. Congratulations.
All right, Dr. Duke, I want to keep it with you for our Spotlight on Education.
Absolutely. Again, congratulations, Heather. Just so proud of that work you're doing. What a great example, and the really importance of our classified staff and what our classified staff bring to this role. So I want to say thank you again for that. Tonight, for our Spotlight on Education, we're actually spotlighting one of our employees, and I'm going to ask Dr. Kathy Presnel to join me at the podium. I am so excited and proud to say, usually when Kathy stands at this podium, it's because she's talking about the great things we're doing in literacy across our district as our 3-6 Literacy Coordinator. I'm excited to stand here tonight and recognize her. Recently, Kathy earned the state recognition. Last year, she was our District Supervisor of the Year, and she was in December named the State Supervisor of the Year. Dr. Presnel started her career in MCS in 2019, when she served as the Instructional Coach at Salem Elementary. In 2021, she transitioned to the Central Office to serve as the Coordinator of Literacy for grades 3 through 6. In this role, she has overseen the implementation and training of our literacy initiatives in all of our upper elementary reading curriculum. However, she is not just helping our teachers implement a curriculum. She is truly helping teachers improve their craft and understanding of literacy so that they can help their students reach outcomes they've never reached before. And this work has led to a real difference in our school system. As I mentioned, in December, Dr. Presnel was selected as the 2425 Tennessee Supervisor of the Year. This honor means she was selected as the top district supervisor out of 147 school districts in Tennessee. And I would guarantee, if you ask any of our teachers, many of whom are here tonight, who work with her on a regular basis, they will affirm that the state got their choice right. Dr. Presnel has created literacy plans that have directly improved classroom work and positively impacted student learning. She is a dedicated and visionary leader who encourages teacher development to ensure every student can successfully read and flourish both in and outside of the classroom. Kathy is a fierce advocate for public education, teacher development, and giving every child the right to literacy. She is an exemplary district-level leader, whose work results in true academic outcomes for students. There is no doubt that it is her leadership that has contributed to the consistent year-over-year increases that MCS has seen in literacy scores that has raised our proficiency levels to previously unreached heights. In addition to her work in literacy, Dr. Presnel also leads our MCS Teacher Advisory Council. This program has created an authentic avenue for teacher voice to be heard and included in our district decision-making. It has also served as a leadership pathway in MCS. Beyond that, Kathy simply just has the heart of a teacher, and she has committed to ensuring we have the best-trained reading teachers in the state of Tennessee. Kathy, we are so proud of you and the work you are doing. Thank you for bringing your talents to MCS and, for most importantly, making a difference in the lives of our students. We're so proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I was so shocked that evening when my name was kind of announced, and I think I'd like to share with you kind of what I said that evening, which was, it's one thing to get to do work that you really, really love. It's a whole other level to get to do it in a place and with people who challenge you to be better every day, but to actually get recognized in this way for it is just kind of, it feels humbling, and I'm just kind of filled with gratitude. I cannot thank you all enough for your leadership. This is a really special place to be. I've worked in a lot of places across the state. I just love the way our school board works together to make really strong decisions for our teachers and kids, and I am just honored to be a part. Thank you so much for your doctor, Duke. Got to work with him at Salem, and again, here. I would follow him anywhere. Sherry Arnett, are you? Thank you for your leadership in making me better every day. And then a huge shout out to the teachers and the leaders. Those who are behind me are just a small fragment of those that I get to work with every day. There is nowhere else I'd rather be to do this kind of work, so thank you all so, so much.
Thank you, Dr. Presnel. We are also very glad that you are here, and you as well, Ms. Lawson. Thank you so much. It's nice to be able to honor you both tonight. Next on the agenda, we have the Job Hastings Audit Report. And I believe we have someone here from Job Hastings, so lead us through that.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jimmy Job. I'm with Job Hastings and Associates, and I'm proud to be here to present our audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th. I didn't know I was going to have such a big audience, but I'll try to speed through it, but just a few highlights. It was an 85-page report, so it's kind of lengthy, but I'll just hit some of the highlights and also mention I'm a proud graduate of Hobgood Elementary.
That's right. Hobgood Rockets.
Got that in my favor. And as always, we appreciate Dr. Duke and Daniel Owens for their great cooperation in getting this audit done. So if you'll just turn over, I think you've got a copy of the reports in front of you.
We do not have copies.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just wing it, and you'll have to imagine the numbers. First of all, we have an audit report in here, and as usual, it's a clean audit opinion. It describes our audit and our responsibilities, and then the responsibilities of management, but in the end, it is a clean audit opinion. There is a report near the front of this report that is called Management's Discussion and Analysis. And that is about a 10-page report from management that mentions the financial highlights of the year, various overview of the financial statements, and it's a good place to start if a citizen or a parent wants to just see the overview of the district and how its financial operations are going. In a report like this, there are two presentations that are shown, two presentations of the financial statements. One of those is called the District-wide Statement, and that includes all the assets of the district. In other words, it would include school buildings and equipment and cash and all the other assets. It also includes long-term debt, like bonds that are used to buy those buildings. So it's more of a perspective that a business would have. And on that report, the school district has total assets of $198 million, which, like I said, includes all the buildings and that sort of thing. It also shows liabilities of about $49 million, which leads to a net position or assets minus the liabilities of $152 million at the end of the year. So what it shows is that the district is in stable financial condition and nothing that seems concerning at all. There's also a presentation that is just based on the budget. In other words, it would only show assets like cash or receivables that will be in cash soon that can be used for the next year's budget. And in that case, and it shows the various funds of the district, which include the General Purpose School Fund, the Federal Program Fund, which is our federal grant money, and the School Nutrition Fund, which, of course, cafeteria, and the Extended School Program, and then there's several other smaller funds. And just under that same presentation, we have revenues and expenses that relate to just the budget and what expenses we budget. For instance, the General Purpose School Fund had total revenues for the year ended June 30th of $98,674,000. We had expenditures of just over $100 million, and then there was, of course, transfers from the city to cover that difference. There are also presentations in this report that show each fund compared to the budget for the year, and of course, all expenditures were within budget, but there's details on how those numbers compared to the budget that you had set for the year. There's many pages, 20 or 30 pages, of footnotes that describe things like the bonds that have been issued, the retirement plans for teachers and other staff members. It tells a lot about the fixed assets, in other words, how much is in buildings and equipment that the council, I mean, excuse me, that the school system owns. So there's a lot of detail there. There's also a report in the back that shows each of our federal grants that came through the system. For instance, it'll show which federal department those funds came from. For instance, the U.S. Department of Agriculture gives a lot of money for nutrition. There was just over $5 million that came through the USDA. And the Department of Education, and it lists each grant and how much was received from each grant. The Department of Education, this is federal money, was about $12.5 million for the year. And of course, a lot of money comes through the state, and there's a schedule that shows those programs that the state issues. And that was about $64 million came through the state. We're also required to issue reports on the system's internal control system and on the federal grant programs. In other words, each grant has certain requirements, that you're required to use that money for certain purposes, and we test to make sure that the system has complied with those requirements, and we issue a report on that as well. Both of those reports are clean opinions. And the very back page is just a summary of all that, and it basically says that we issued a clean report. There were no findings this year, so that's outstanding. And this was submitted to the state earlier, and I'm sure it'll be published on the website as well. So if anybody has any questions, I'm glad to... Yes, sir?
Don't y'all get bored doing ours because it's so like perfect?
I'm bored right now.
I mean, you're not boring me, but I'm just like, you know, isn't this just a yawn when y'all have to do Murfreesboro City Schools?
You have to be a special personality to be a CPA.
Oh, wow, but I mean, we're just so perfect in everything we do. I just wonder. And we're also humble. That's probably our biggest flaw.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Job?
If that's okay, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Job and his team, and to Molly, who's in the back. They work incredibly hard with our finance team to get a really clean, a correct accounting of what has increasingly become a larger and larger budget every year. And then a huge shout out, I don't know if Beth is here, but to Daniel and Beth and their entire team. I was thrilled when we got the report saying that no audit findings for a budget this big to have no findings really just speaks to the work that Daniel leads with his team, our department heads in following those protocols, because there's a lot of state rules that we have to follow. So thank you for that hard work. Thank you for telling them there were no reports, no audit findings. That's some of my favorite words there, and thank you to Daniel and his team as well.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Job. And I will say, it may be, numbers may not be everybody's thing, but these numbers are what make us go around in the district. So all the good stuff we see is made possible by careful attention to the budget. So thank you. We appreciate it. Thanks. And next on the agenda is public comment, and we have no public comment for this evening. And then we're followed by our consent agenda. So Board, you've seen the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent items pass. All right, action items. First on our action item agenda is approving the Board minutes from our last meeting, which was on December 10th. You have seen those, Board. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as printed?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, minutes are approved. Next, what everyone's been waiting for. This is our approval of our tenured teachers.
Yes. Sorry, in your packet tonight, Board, you will find a list of 53 certified employees who have met all the requirements to attain tenure under Tennessee state law and board policy. These employees have completed the required number of years with Murfreesboro City Schools and have obtained an overall performance effectiveness level of above expectations or significantly above expectations for the last two years. We are so proud of their consistent high performance that these teachers demonstrate, and we are recommending to the Board with great approval, recommending approval with great enthusiasm. So I make a mo, or I don't make a motion, I am recommending to the Board that they make a motion to approve tenure for these teachers.
Thank you very much. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving tenure for our list, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Of course not. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, so we are thrilled, and now that they've formally been approved by tenure, I've asked Dr. Johnson to come up to recognize these. Again, our teachers on the panel really understand the significance of tenure, because what it really represents is that they've not only put the time into our district, but they put in the time and the work at an exceptional level that is significantly above expectations. So you really are looking at the Best of MCS, who are pouring their heart into our students. And to me, tenure is more than just something we give to teachers because the law says. What tenure really says is like you are part of our team. We want you here. We want to keep you here, and we're so thankful for what you do. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to all the family members. Everyone knows that teaching is not a solo venture. If you're married or have parents or a family, everyone's involved, so just congratulations to our teachers.
And again, congratulations. We have 53 tenured teachers this year, so we're so excited about that. So congratulations. So we will get started. Ashley Walker. Catherine Tenen. Jessica Scruggs. Michelle Pizzards, Pizzards. Did I say that correctly? Darts, okay. Haley True Love. Jessica Sorth. Melissa Skates. Jordan Onby. Angela Wilson. Nerissa Franklin. Quintella Jordan. Kathy Presnel. Danielle Gregory.
There's no question.
Love the shirt. Love the shirt.
Hassan Hassan. Beth Wood. Richard Wood. Brittany Holloway. Christopher Penrose. Christopher Penrose. Jamie Helta. Melissa Bradshaw. Casey Taylor. So again, congratulations to all our tenure teachers and families, because you're a part of this as well, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
We'll take a moment to let people step out if they, if they want. You're welcome to stay.
Someone will put that at the bottom there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right. And babies ain't go home and go to sleep.
Yeah, that's a lot. They did do good.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is approval of a memorandum of understanding regarding emergency relocation transportation agreement for Rutherford Collegiate Prep. Dr. Duke.
Yes, Rutherford Collegiate Prep requested assistance from Murfreesboro City Schools to provide emergency relocation transportation services in emergency situations due to the limitations in RCP's current transportation infrastructure. In the spirit of collaboration and good faith, we have developed a proposed emergency relocation transportation agreement that clearly defines roles, responsibilities, and financial obligations for both parties. This agreement ensures that MCS can extend its support to Rutherford Collegiate Prep during emergencies while maintaining operational and financial safeguards. The agreement includes provisions for reimbursements for cost and indemnification of MCS, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any questions or discussions?
Happy to help.
All right, hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor of approving the MOU, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And there are none, the motion carries. Next is approval of the contract with Motorola.
This cooperative purchasing agreement for the purchase of Motorola radio equipment and services is submitted to the Board for approval. State law allows for local education agencies to engage in cooperative purchasing based on the same terms of a legal bid initiated by a cooperative purchasing group. This agreement will allow us to purchase the third and final phase of the replacement of our school bus transportation radios. So you may remember, we have done this the last few years in a slow phase to get all of those replaced, so this will be the third and final phase, which allows our bus drivers have radios that are more, have better range, also to communicate with emergency officials should there be an emergency. The total cost is in your packet in our budget. We budgeted a hundred and seventeen thousand, and the price, I think, is right at a hundred and twelve thousand in your budget, so we will not exceed that, but we are recommending approval of this so that we can move forward with the purchase.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Duke. Do I have a motion to approve the contract?
Madam Chair, I move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next on the agenda, motion to approve Comcast Enterprise Dark Fiber Budget Amendment and Agreement. Dr. Duke.
Yes, this Comcast Enterprise Service Masters Agreement establishes a partnership between the city of Murfreesboro's IT Department and Comcast to manage and optimize the city's fiber network. It includes a maintenance plan for the INET fiber network to enhance reliability, support operational demands, and prevent interruption to critical services, which includes for us our security cameras. This agreement received city council approval during the December nineteenth city council meeting. We are also seeking board approval since a portion of the funds will come from the city schools budget. The accompanying budget amendment allocates funds for this project, and it pulls from increases in our interest revenues. The annual cost will be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and will be paid in the technology budget category moving forward.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the motion carries. Next on the agenda is a motion to approve the library materials recommendation. Dr. Duke.
Murfreesboro City Schools received a request for reconsideration for library materials regarding the book It Feels Good to Be Yourself by Teresa Thorne on December eleventh, 2024. This book is part of the library collection at Bradley Academy. Per Board Policy four point four zero three, Dr. Lewis, Principal of Bradley, convened a materials review committee to review the challenged materials, and that committee completed the checklist for reconsideration of library materials form. The committee met on December seventeenth and completed the review process per Board Policy. The committee consisted of a school media specialist from our district, a classroom teacher from our district, a parent from Bradley Academy, and district instructional staff. Four committee members recommended removal of the book, one committee member recommended, recommended to retain. These results were sent to Dr. Lewis per Board Policy four point four zero three. Dr. Lewis presented a recommendation to affirm the majority decision of the review committee to the Director of Schools on December nineteenth, 2024. Board Policy requires the Director of Schools to assess the findings along with the recommendation of both the principal and the review committee and present a recommendation to the Board. The recommendation of the Director of Schools is to affirm the decision of the review committee and the school principal and remove the book from circulation.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation for removal of the book?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Second.
Second, Mr. Settles. Any questions or discussion?
Okay, I do want to say that I really wrestled with this, because, how do I put it? I really wrestled with this because we had someone come in to our community and bring up something to our attention, and I really was concerned about were the parents, were the teachers, were the administrative staff really concerned about the book? Because I really am against just going against banning books. But in this instance, when they brought up readability, I did reach out and I talked to a lot of people about this book, because I really wanted to know if the, what is it? If it was reaching its intended audience, and I wanted to make as much of a, not about my opinion of what I thought about the book as not unbiased as possible. And it's just, it's just challenging, because I would prefer that this book be used as, if it can be used as a resource to help children that might be dealing with these issues, because we are in a public school. Public schools, the kids have different issues. And I just, I don't know, this one was harder than most. I really wrestled with it, because I believe that librarians are skilled and are experts in their craft, and they go to school for making sure that their, the reading materials are appropriate for their, what is it, for their population. And I just wanted to, I'm happy that we did a panel. That way, I have guidance from the panel of what the panel also agreed with, so then it takes a little bit out of what Jeanette thinks and what is best for the children and our families in Murfreesboro City Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I do want to say that I am so grateful, and I said it kind of jokingly about Murfreesboro City being the best district, but it really is, because it's a process in place. When issues like this come up, we have a process. Not only do we have a process, we actually follow our process. That cannot be said of every district in the state, and I think that's a really, really good thing. If you impanel a committee, I feel very strongly that we listen to the recommendations of a committee, because that's what they're there for. I never take it as my job to second guess a committee that's already been second guessed, because our process involves a committee being convened, and the committee's recommendation being reviewed, and the recommendation of the recommendation being reviewed. So I would be a little bit, I don't know, I don't want to use the words that come to my head, so I won't use that one, but it would be a little bit silly of me to third guess everybody else's after they've read it, after they've done all of their due diligence, which I believe they do, because we have the top. So when I, I think I'm in one, two, three, I guess I'm in the four, eight, I can't count that high. I've been on the school board for eight years, going, I guess I'm into my ninth year now, and I was reminded of something, one of my kids on, on one of my, on my bus that I drive gave me a card for Christmas. And it helped to remind me, the reason that I got on the school board, politics had zero to do with it. When it comes to the school board and the education of our kids, the protection of our kids, I do not deal politics at all. I don't see Republican, I don't see Democrats, I just see kids that need to be protected, kids that need to learn in a safe environment, and that's why I do this work. And I think I share that with all of my board members. We're not here because, you know, we've got a political drum to beat. We're here for the benefit of these kids, and that's why we got in the job. We are not here to stick out our chest or stake our claim or any of those things. It's all about the kids, and I hope that the community at large can see that. I really do. I hope you can see it, I hope you can feel it. When you see us in the community, we're about the kids. We don't care about the politics of it. We want our kids to be protected. We want our kids to learn in the best and the safest environment, and that's why we go through the processes and procedures that we go through. So I have no issue voting in affirmative on this, so I'm happy to let y'all know I'm going to say yes.
Any other comments or questions, Ms. Dodd?
So just to be clear, everyone up here, I'm sure, has had a hard time with this deciding. So I want everyone in the community to know that, to know that we did not take this lightly at all. This is all I've thought about since this came up. You know, how was I going to go with this? So just know that we have, we have taken all this very seriously. And also, I want to clarify, so a vote yes would be to remove the book. Is that correct?
That's correct, because that was the recommendation, so the motion is to...
Okay, I just want to make that clear, so none of us make a mistake.
Any other comments, questions?
I would just like to say, I submitted this recommendation for review after a lot of prayer and thought, and it was a hard decision. Our guest speaker brought it to our attention. I don't appreciate the way it was brought to our attention, but I was glad that, that we found out about this. The book has been on the shelf since 2022, from what I understand, it's never been checked out, so it's not been in circulation, but it's still there. And my concern was a kindergartner coming in checking out that particular book, and then it causing confusion in his little, his or her little mind. And I just think we, as board members, are responsible for protecting kids and allowing parents to do their job. So that's my reasoning behind it.
Thank you, Ms. Long. I'd like to add some comments as well. I also wrestled with this. Couple of things that I was trying to balance. One is that I'm always concerned anytime I feel like there's a push to demonize and marginalize population. And city schools is very diverse. We have kids who come from homes that don't look like everybody else's homes, and I'm always concerned if there's a message coming from the school that maybe their family's not welcome or valued. So that is a concern on the one hand. On the other hand, I trust our librarians, and so I was really eager to hear what the recommendation was going to be from the panel that was compiled and after they reviewed it with an academic eye on things. So those two things I was wrestling with. But I also want to address the way this came before us, and there's some things that I think the public needs to understand about how this came to us, so that you're aware sometimes of how these shows that show up at school boards, what the motivation behind those might be. So we had a speaker who brought this to our attention, we've made reference to that at our December board meeting. This person had advertised his visit to us for weeks, weeks before he came, never contacted the school, never contacted central office, and never contacted this board, even though he came and yelled at us about this dangerous book we had on the shelf. So apparently, he knew about it for weeks, but never let us know. We only found out because he was making a media tour of Nashville media markets when he was here the day of our board meeting, and someone happened to hear about it and let us know. So to me, I think, had he contacted the board, Ms. Long's the person who filed the challenge, had he contacted us about this concern, I'm going to assume he would have filed the challenge then, we'd be right where we are now, probably faster, but the thing that would have been missing was some personal promotion and a show. So I just think that's really important for everyone to realize, that that's how this came about, that it was in the works, but none of us knew, and so if it were really so dangerous, what was the motivation there? With that said, I think we will turn to a vote, so we have a motion to approve the recommendation from Dr. Duke, which is to remove the book from the shelves. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is approval of the revenue and expenditure report. Mr. Owens, take the mic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to give a quick shout out to my finance team for no findings. That would be due to all the hard work that Beth, Becky, Melinda, Dina, Jackie, Adam, and our payroll team, as well as Kim Fisher, again. They do, do great work for us and really take that upon themselves to try to have no findings. Before you, I do have the budget and revenue expenditure report. A couple of highlights I would like to point out on the revenue is if you'll go to line four, other local revenue. We're at ninety-five percent right now. That is largely due to interest. I know I keep bringing it up, but this year has been phenomenal, and hopefully, we can continue for several more months until, you know, we see what the economy will do this coming year. As far as the expenditure report, if you'll go down the line, you know, this report is for November. Obviously, we shouldn't be around fifty percent, except year line item, Board of Education, that is for Tennessee Risk Management and our audit fees. We've had paid some of that stuff out, so that is a little bit more than traditionally being paid out. Outside of that, our comparison for this time of year in November does align with our previous three years. We do have a shortfall of three point six as of right now, but as you know, when we get to January and February, we will receive more property tax and, of course, increase our levels where we will plateau. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the revenue and expenditure report?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Second, Ms. Dodd. Any questions or comments from Mr. Owens?
No, is that a new beard that Mr. Owens has? That was my only question.
I was trying to join the beard board.
Okay, that's, that's good, and hey, let your husband know.
Oh, he's watching. My parents are always going to watch these.
I did actually have a question, since I'm new to this, so you can explain it a little bit more.
Okay.
So it looks like that we are considerably over budget, but we have more expenditures coming in. Can you explain that a little bit more of what, why does the budget look the way that it looks?
So what we consider fund balance is our cash at the beginning of every year, and so when we set that budget, that is like a contract that we are going to stay within those parameters. So we... So we start fresh every year with that budget in July. Now, we have all that money setting aside. That is our cash flow, as you could say. So when we take off in July, obviously you're incurring expenses real quick. So those shoot up and it's sort of like a roller coaster that it keeps going up the hill. Revenue will catch up as county taxes and state taxes start flowing in, typically around January to February. And then you will see that it surpasses our expenditures and then usually plateaus around April or May. And then in June, we have to make projections to close out the year. We haven't received, say, all our local sales option tax or some of those other little items like that. So we have to make projections until we get our audit, make sure the audit confirms that our projections are correct. If not, we'll make an adjustment and then close out the year, usually in November. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Sorry. I'm trying not to be as boring, but it's boring.
I like money. I like hearing about money and expenditures, fine.
We love to smile and joke, though, I promise.
Mr. Owens, and to clarify, I know you talked about property tax coming in really January and February pays that bill after the end of the year. Can you talk a little bit about sales tax? I think that's another reason why there's a little bit of that shortfall because our sales tax isn't... Even though this is an end of the year, end of November report, it's not November sales tax. Revenue is correct.
And that's a great point. If you got your report in front of you, I can sort of give you a little idea of that. On the revenue, on line two, it says right now we receive four point five. That's twenty-seven percent of what we projected, okay? We receive three months of this already. They're two months behind. So that's three months and that's a fourth of what we budgeted. So that's pretty good odds. So if it was four months, you know, that would be evened out. Four months out of twelve, that'd be a quarter. So what they do is they hold two months back. And as they come along, they'll start in September, October, November, and then go all the way through the final year. They true up with us after the end of year in June. So when I was talking about us making projections in June to close the books, it is a lot of things like this, sales tax and stuff. So right now, we have to look at the pacing, protect our cash flows. Right now, we are roughly, you know, looking at about a million two more than what we budgeted for, which is very promising. But obviously, the economy may take a shortfall or it might boost. But you know, it's a game you have to play with. But it is two months behind and, you know, we have to budget for that.
So shop local, it matters.
It does.
Yes.
Now, is that local, is that Murfreesboro City or Rutherford County? Because sometimes I wait to get food until I get back to Murfreesboro. I won't even buy it in like Laverne or Smyrna just because I'm scared that it won't be... I know this sounds crazy. I really will wait. I'll get my, you know, my McDonald's when I hit the city. I won't get it in Laverne or nothing like that. I'll wait until I get here and then get my McDonald's. Am I getting it right? Should I, is that right? Or does it matter if I get it in Laverne?
So we share a lot of this information with Rutherford County. It's based off our population we serve. So Rutherford County gives us that number. I think it's fourteen point seven percent of all students in Rutherford County. That's Smyrna, Laverne...
So you can stop in Waldron Road and get that hamburger. You'll be okay.
It's not a city sales tax.
It's based off the population you serve within the county. So that franchise owner, that McDonald's will be...
I'm okay in the county.
You are okay.
But it's better if I get it in the city. Will I, will we get more, if I get it in the city?
Unfortunately not.
Oh, so it don't matter.
So just stop in Laverne. And your census...
I want to do another one, but I know you're not supposed to.
Same with like mixed rank and things like that. A lot of your local revenue is based off percentages of students served.
Okay, okay.
Longer in the county, that's a good start.
Okay.
Okay. My comment is just, tonight is your night. And thank you for the good audit. I know it was like you and your team. Thank you so much because, I mean, that's just the best news ever, don't y'all think?
Absolutely.
No findings, none whatsoever.
Kind of unheard of.
That's amazing.
Thank you. I am humble, but you know, it does start with my predecessors. So you know, the individuals and the other department heads did play a part in that.
But you're doing a great job. And we all up here, we know that, we acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I will add, since we're gushing on Daniel for a minute because he just finished his one year anniversary with us and Thursday he'll be finished with his M-TAS training, which is municipality...
Certified Municipal Financial Officer.
Certified Municipal Financial Officer. So he's been doing that for the past year and his final training, all that stuff is Thursday and then he'll take his test and all that kind of stuff. But congratulations, Daniel, it's a lot of hard work.
All right, let's give this man a vote. All right, we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of approving the revenue and expenditure report, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Owens. Reports and information. First, we have our enrollment report. Mr. Rocha.
Good evening, morning.
Good evening.
Pleased to be with you this evening. Let me give you just one second to pull up our slides here so our viewers can see this as well. Thank you for the opportunity. This is period four. So anytime I'm presenting, we're in 2025. But just to go back, this ended December sixteenth, 2024. So we looked at twenty day reporting period. Our enrollment, this is from period nine, which is a light blue. And then we're up twelve students in period four from the last period. So we're in nine thousand three hundred and twelve students. So we've seen a slight increase. And again, that is K six. So when we look at our average daily attendance rate, this number drops off slightly as we go. This number is at ninety-four point seven. When we look at truancy, that dark blue is the number that is this year. If you look at the original upload, I actually for period three switched the two years, switched the years. This is the correct version of that. We see that we're a slight increase that. Slight increase is just with a couple of schools where we've seen that. We're working with them closely on it as well. Product absentee rate, that is a downward trend. We're at twelve percent. Those numbers are just slightly different. Looking at that as well. When we take a look at our PTR numbers, within range there as well. Our twenty day graph. When we take a look at the attendance, this is a three year marker. Looking at the blue line is the mark of twenty-four, twenty-five. You'll see that spike a little bit and you'll see a little bit of that when we talk about period five as well. Be happy to entertain any questions.
I have a question, Mr. Rocha.
Yes, sir.
It has nothing to do with your report, though. It's fantastic and wonderful. And I would like your graphs.
Well, thank you.
And one day I'm going to learn to read them really, really well. My question has to do with the fact that you are from California. And I know that there's a lot going on out there right now with the fires. And now, is your family, you still have family out there?
My entire family is still there, yes, sir.
Is everybody okay out there?
They're okay.
I'm very happy for that.
Thank you.
The next question is probably going to be more to Dr. Duke and the rest of the board, which is, I have not heard... The Los Angeles County School District is second largest or first?
One of the largest.
One of the largest in the country. And I don't know how it's been affected. But my question would be, once everything settles or whatever, is there anything that this board can do support wise? I know we kind of think about that when we have tragedies close by and things like that. But I'm really thinking about LA County and what they're going through right now and the schools. That's, whenever something like this happens, I think about how the schools are affected because I'm a school board member. And I'm just wondering, and maybe y'all can... Where's Lisa? She usually knows stuff like this, how to do it. Not that you don't, but I was thinking about Lisa Trill. Maybe we can think of something that we can do tangible and not just like send an award that says, we're thinking about you. Maybe there's something... I just want to put it out there.
Yeah, I think it's a, and we can look into that. We'll say we haven't followed the school. I know there were multiple schools that were completely destroyed. And I do know that LA Unified District has reopened. And I do know they've actually moved students from some of those schools that have been destroyed into other campuses. But I think it's a great idea. It's definitely something we'll talk to our schools about. It'd be a great chance for our students to get involved as well. One of the things I often think about now that we have to do this, but you know, when you think about...
Backpacks.
The backpacks or just, they have to replace libraries.
Yes, yes.
Have to replace things like that. And so there are some definitely ways that we'll talk to our schools and we'll talk to Lisa to make sure that we can do something.